Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is to receive the General Manager's Report. Our first item is a sad one. I'd like to take a moment to bid farewell to City of North Las Vegas Councilman Robert Elessin from this commission. This is his last meeting as a board member. While we are sad to lose him, we are extremely grateful for the years of dedication and leadership he has displayed to help build and improve our region's transportation vision. And I am not the only one who wants to say farewell. We'd like to roll the camera.
Oh, Bobby's stories, haircuts from Consonman Reese to where you kind of look like you stuck your finger in a socket. Not anything against Gary's barbering, but I still remember that when you walked into a Health District Board meeting, we kind of razzed you about that. But what I would always say is you keep trying to get me in trouble in board meetings. You talk to me during motions, you're going through notes, and we have to do hand checks. I just don't always know where you're at. No, actually, you're a delight to work with. You've got a great sense of humor. Don't ever lose that. That's much needed in politics. Bobby, I just want to say thank you for your years of service. You are truly a public servant, and it's been a delight to work with you.
One of my favorite things about Robert is the fact that for so many years on the RTC, no one knew how to pronounce his name, and he's taken it in stride. Even more impressive, it was one of the first times I had the opportunity to serve with Robert when he was asked to join the Clean Water Coalition in a very controversial time. And shortly thereafter, for the first time in state history, we shut down a public agency. So Robert certainly can take credit for that. I want to thank Robert for being himself. It's so refreshing that an elected official serves with such honesty, integrity, tremendous work ethic, collaborative in his approach, and certainly from a regional perspective, he was a leader in the RTC Board, the Regional Flood Control, and just working towards solutions. I wish him the very best. He's become a very good friend to him and his family. Best wishes.
Bob, thank you for always being so good-natured. It's a pleasure to serve on a committee with you. I particularly will miss your tie and shirt combinations, even if I had to wear sunglasses a couple of times. But the brightness that they brought was part of your personality, and it added luster to our meetings. Thank you for going out of your way when I was a new member of the RTC. And even though we were on opposite sides of voting on one of the very toughest issues ever to face the RTC, you were always professional and factual, and it was kindness that you showed me in helping me get used to those tough decisions. North Las Vegas was fortunate to have you for three terms, and we were fortunate to have you on the RTC. They will miss you, and I mean it. We will miss you too.
Robert, you've been nothing but a pain in the butt to me the entire time you've served in public office, from the Clean Water Coalition to the Regional Transportation Commission. Actually, it's been wonderful working with you. I wish you all the wonderful things that life has in store for you yet to come, and good luck for what's ahead of you.
Well, it's been a real pleasure working with Commissioner Elessin on the RTC Board, and I look forward to hearing more good things about what he's going to be doing in the future. In fact, I understand that he's coming to work for the City of Henderson. So we're looking forward to seeing him. All kidding aside, I want to say that Commissioner Elessin has just been a very principled and thoughtful transportation planner and serves this community well. I know that during the time when we were looking at the contracts and how we serve our community, he was always very thoughtful about the city and local governments' resources, as well as looking at how we best serve the residents of Southern Nevada to provide them with transportation services. So it's really been a pleasure working with you, Robert, and look forward to seeing you again in Southern Nevada in the future.
Well, Councilman Elessin, we appreciate all you've done at Regional Transportation, Regional Flood. I've learned a lot from you, helping me understand as a rookie the things that I needed to learn down there. We wish you well. Also, just want to tell you that I appreciate you being on the right side of the four vote. Now, it was kind of some tough times, but we got through that and got the contracts going forward. Hopefully, we can continue to transport people in Clark County. But I wish you well, and you're always welcome to come over to RTC Regional Flood and give your input and give us your advice and counsel. So good luck in the future. Thanks again.
Well, Robert, I wanted to get you a couple of parting gifts as you're leaving the RTC. And I just wanted you to know, at this time, I know a lot of times we give kind of joke gifts, but in this case, I wanted to put a lot of thought and consideration into this. I kind of went back onto the RTC website and pulled up our mug shots there, and you obviously do not look the same now as you did in that picture. So I thought, what better gift than I could give you that would restore that youthful look that you once had? So with that, I got you some Spiket. And I know for years, for about eight years after every haircut, Mayor Goodman and Chairman Brown kind of made fun of your spiked hair. But in your picture, you have a well-groomed look, so that's going to help restore that. For most of us, as we've taken on more responsibility in public service, we tend to have less hair as we go year by year. But miraculously, you seem to have more hair year after year. So that's going to help you manage that and take on that youthful look, as well as some hair dye, because I've noticed that your hair color has drastically changed from that picture. So with those two things, you're going to be able to go back looking like you had never even been in public service for 12 years, and you'll have that youthful look once again. So with that, Robert, I just want to wish you the best in whatever you do after this. I know you'll continue on with your serving others, because that's the type of person you are. So thanks for everything. Bye.
That's kind of hard to follow, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the people of Clark County. It's been fun. It's been enjoyable. I appreciate my colleagues from the mayor, that's the proudest mayor in the whole universe, or however that goes, he's down to me. So I'm very appreciative. I've enjoyed serving here. I'm appreciative of RTC staff and all that they've done and helped move this work forward.
Yeah, well, hold that thought. You hold that thought.
Wow. Well, I'm done. I'm good.
Okay, okay.
I just happened to look up at my wife.
Peggy, could you stand to be recognized again, please?
I did fine at Flood, but then that was quite a tribute, and I appreciate all of you that I served with. Thanks.
The Board would also like to present you this token of recognition and appreciation for your service and dedication to improving Southern Nevada's transportation infrastructure. Presented to you by the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. So we'd like to give this to you. And also, Mayor told me one of these donated to a party church.
Peggy, come down here. Robert, get your watch down here. Ask Peggy to come down for the picture.
At this point, I'd like to turn the General Manager Report over to Councilwoman Deborah March, who's going to give us a report on the Southern Nevada Strong collaborative regional planning effort.
Thank you, Tina. And on behalf of Southern Nevada Strong, where I serve as the Chair of the Consortium Committee, I'm pleased to be here with you today. And with us today also is Brittany Markarian, who's the Public Information Officer from Southern Nevada Strong as well. Thank you. I'd also like to offer a personal thank you to Commissioner June Kiliani for her service and leadership on the SNRPC Board, which is the ultimate adopting authority of the regional plan, to Commissioner Larry Brown for his participation on the Consortium Committee, and also to General Manager Tina Quigley for her participation on the Consortium Committee as well, and also to the RTC for your involvement in this regional effort to build an economically resilient Southern Nevada. I'd like to begin by posing a question. What can we be if we allowed ourselves, or even dared ourselves, to dream about what Southern Nevada could be? In thinking about this, I've got an aspirational video to share with you that provides some feedback from some of the folks who've been involved in the Southern Nevada Strong initiative. If we could play that video.
My vision for a strong community is that we have a big connection between our services. So things aren't so disjunct, that we can move, we can play, we can exercise, we can get outside, we can get access to care, we can go to recreational places in a thoughtful manner.
It's finally becoming cohesive, and I think that's long overdue. So people are finding out that, hey, I'm doing that too. Why aren't we partnering? Or you're already in that area? Why don't I know about this? So it's a really good opportunity to open those doors and make those connections and make our projects and whatever we're doing on our own go even further and work as a whole to push this forward, because more people makes it even easier to go through.
Because this town, and all of us who live here, and our children deserve to live in a place that is the best it can be for everyone.
And through community engagement and outreach efforts such as focus groups, telephone surveys, and participation in events like the Three-Foot Law awareness ride and many others, we found that Southern Nevadans value the following things: access to good jobs, access to quality education, and a strong local economy. We also heard that they enjoy our beautiful weather, the general affordability, and access to outdoors and entertainment options. These are just a few of the concerns and attributes that Southern Nevada Strong will work to address, to maintain and to strengthen through this collaborative process. As some of you may be aware, Southern Nevada Strong is a regional planning initiative of the SNRPC. Our mission is to build a foundation for the long-term economic success and community livelihood by better integrating transportation, housing, and job opportunities throughout our communities. We competed with other communities nationally and were chosen to receive funding through a partnership for Sustainable Communities, which is a program of HUD, Department of Transportation, and the EPA. These funds provided us with the resources to conduct the in-depth research and community engagement efforts to analyze issues facing our community and propose collaborative solutions between now and 2015. All that said, a project like this can be overwhelming, so let's discuss some of the frequently asked questions. Can we move that forward? Okay, thank you. What is Southern Nevada Strong? Well, Southern Nevada Strong is a process necessary to create a well-thought-out regional plan for Southern Nevada. We began with in-depth research and analysis of our region. And it's interesting to note that we've missed out on many opportunities for grants in Southern Nevada because we lacked the data and background information to pursue those grants. We would be rejected by the federal government on many of these grants. And so this research that we're doing will allow us to be able to be competitive for more federal funding. Then, starting with our kickoff event last February, we launched into our public outreach phase in year two. We gathered input from local communities, businesses, and political leaders. We asked them what they think about Southern Nevada and what they want our region to be, and how we can work together to achieve these goals. Next, we will engage our residents from across the valley to weigh in on these ideas and offer suggestions as to how to make the community stronger. This process will include a small number of demonstration projects that will model what it would look like if our communities ended up with a project that was more regionally competitive and more regionally diverse. That highlights the implementation strategies and priorities for this project. We're currently working in year two. If we can move to the next slide. We're currently working in year two, and so I'd like to touch on some of the outreach efforts that will occur this coming year. Southern Nevada Strong formally kicked off our regional planning effort on February 8th. More than 150 Southern Nvidan elected officials, business leaders, community leaders, and others attended the kickoff event to learn more about the project. The media was also very engaged in this process, and they will remain an important part of this collaborative process as well. We began a series of public engagement activities, which are ongoing, including attending community events, hosting online surveys, delivering email blasts, conducting phone surveys, hosting community workshops, and giving presentations such as this one. Later this summer, we'll be using this public input to draft goals and visual scenarios to express possible futures for our valley. And in September and October, we'll be developing a draft plan, which we presented later on this fall, and then in January, the draft plan will be submitted to the SNRPC for consideration for adoption. Once accepted, it will be used to guide demonstration projects to model goals across our community. An example of this would be one of the areas that we're looking at and are working with the RTC on right now is the Maryland Parkway Project, which would look at transit along the Maryland Parkway Corridor, taking folks from the airport downtown, in front of UNLV, in front of the Sunrise Hospital, and then into the downtown Las Vegas area, which has significant impact on the lives of many people that live along that corridor and work in that corridor as well. The next slide. Okay, no, that's okay. The Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition is the comprehensive planning umbrella for the entire Southern Nevada region. Although this grant is staffed in Henderson, the scope of the Southern Nevada Strong project includes all members of the SNRPC and communities across the valley. Our partners include the SNRPC, the City of Henderson, the City of Las Vegas, City of North Las Vegas, Boulder City, Clark County, Regional Transportation Commission, UNLV, Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority, Southern Nevada Water Authority, Clark County School District, the Health District, and the Conservation District of Southern Nevada. Additional partners include businesses and community leaders, as well as nonprofit organizations, among others. So how do we manage a project of this magnitude? Well, it's really a lot like eating an elephant. It's one bite at a time. And as you can see from the previous slide, that there are six task groups that focus on many different areas that we're focusing on. And they include transportation, which Aaron Breen from UNLV will be chairing. The housing portion will be chaired by Sam Cherry. Economic Development and Diversification is being the chair, I think will be announced at the next meeting, but I believe it's someone from the Boulevard Mall, the General Manager of the Boulevard Mall. The Environment is being chaired by Rob Lang from Brookings in UNLV. The Healthy Communities piece is being chaired by Sean Gerstenberg, who you heard from in the video presentation. And the Public Engagement and Equity piece is being chaired by Cass Palmer from United Way. This is where the heavy lifting really happens and where we take great ideas and turn them into actionable items. And I'd like to just point out that some of the things that are going to be going on with this process include a study that's underway that has to do with the Existing Conditions Report. But one of the things that we're working on is GPS and GIS mapping, so we're looking at land use decisions that we make as community leaders and how they impact, whether it's the availability of grocery stores, or education centers, or air quality conditions. So now we start to have information that we can reflect on, and as elected officials, we can make better decisions based on information and facts and how it impacts the quality of life of all of our residents in Southern Nevada. So it's very significant, and the volume of the mapping that will occur will allow us to be a lot more competitive for federal funding in the future. While the regional plan is the end result, the process is really the key. The process will focus heavily on involvement. Involvement by key players from every jurisdiction. For example, our Consortium Committee is currently made up of 25 members, including elected officials, city and county managers, each of the task group chairs, and various business and community leaders. The RTC participates not only on the Consortium Committee, but also on several task groups, as well as at the working group level. When all is said and done, who's going to implement this plan? Well, the answer is largely represented in this room today: local governments, agencies, and organizations. The plan that will result will simply serve as a toolkit that will be subject to adoption by the SNRPC and all of the local governments. Other partners will also have a role in the implementation, such as UNLV, the RTC, and the Housing Authority, among others. So what are the benefits of community planning, and why do we do a plan? And I know that I've heard comments, well, this is just another plan, and we sure don't want to see this plan just put on the shelves. This is really about planning our future for Southern Nevada. Neighborhoods with high walkability have increased home values. Urban environments are key to economic resilience and our ability to attract strong companies and the talent they rely on. People used to follow jobs. Now, 64% of college-educated millennials are choosing where they want to live first, then looking for a job, with 77% of them planning on living in the American urban core. Public health experts and physicians have documented the benefits of walkable neighborhoods and increased access to healthy foods. Housing and transportation costs account for more than 50% of the average household budget here in Southern Nevada. That's 50%, leaving remaining funds stretched tightly to afford the necessities in life like food, healthcare, and clothing. By increasing housing and transportation choices in the valley, we reduce costs and free up spending for other quality-of-life expenses. Building a strong economy means increasing connectivity by allowing people to travel efficiently and creating healthy neighborhoods where people want to live and where employers want to invest. In the old model, being an inexpensive place to do business was key. Now, being rich in talent and ideas is essential. The old model of attracting companies was key. Now, attracting and producing educated people is more important. There are opportunities to get involved, and we like to encourage folks to volunteer, to participate, or attend workshops, and find out more about the Southern Nevada Strong Initiative. We do have a website, and I'd like to encourage you to visit our website at www.southernnevadastrong.org, or attend one of the upcoming events. We also have social media, including Facebook, and you can follow us on Twitter as well. And in closing, I'd just like to share a quote with you on livability. This is a quote from Secretary LeHood from the U.S. Department of Transportation, and he shared, "Livability means being able to take your kids to school, go to work, see a doctor, drop by the grocery store or post office, go out to dinner and a movie, and play with your kids at the park, all without having to get into your car." Livability means building the communities that help Americans live the lives they want to live, whether those communities are urban centers, small towns, or rural areas. And with that, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Comments or questions? Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. I have to comment that Southern Nevada Strong has really blossomed, and I think it's going to be a very key partner in this community. The Maryland Parkway Coalition that's formed, and you're right, Brooke Jimenez is the Chair of that from Boulevard Mall, there's going to be a different activity, trying to get businesses involved in government, as well as trying to work with the nonprofits in that part of it. So it's going to be a good win-win for us just within the valley itself. So thank you for your leadership on that.
Okay, next on our agenda, I am going to give a legislative update. We have a legislative slide coming up. So there were two bills that the Board had a lot of interest in in the legislative session. We had AB 413 and SB 322. I'm going to go ahead and address AB 413, and Rudy, I'll ask you in your report to address SB 322. So AB 413, also known as the Clark County Motor Vehicle Fuel Tax Indexing Bill, which is a lot of words, but simply put, it allows Clark County Board of Commissioners to consider tying the tax rate on fuel to inflation. Now, we went into this thinking it was going to be fairly simple, because all other counties in the state of Nevada have enabling legislation allowing them to do this. But we learned quickly that it was fraught with lots of challenges, and it was no small part due to the leadership of Speaker Kirkpatrick and Assemblyman Crescent Hardy, and a team, and I mean a team, of business and industry leaders in Southern Nevada that this bill garnered bipartisan support. We were completely amazed at how much support we got for it, and it was passed with only four minutes to spare before the midnight deadline on Monday. So a great relief, very exciting. What we heard throughout our effort to work on this bill was that the reason it had so much support is because it does truly have a profound effect on economic growth and competitiveness of Southern Nevada, not only for creating jobs right now in the construction and engineering world, but also for the long-term competitiveness that it will in enticing new businesses and growing existing businesses in our region. So it has a lot of potential for Southern Nevada. What exactly does the bill say? What did we pass? Assembly Bill 413 is enabling legislation that will allow Clark County to index the fuel tax to inflation through the year 2016. The legislation requires two-thirds majority vote by the county commissioners to approve it, and that vote must be taken place by October 1st of this year, 2013. In addition, the bill calls for two ballot measures on the November 8, 2016 ballot. One ballot measure will ask the voters in Clark County whether or not to authorize the Board of County Commissioners to continue imposing fuel tax indexing, or to initiate motor vehicle fuel tax indexing, starting January 1, 2017. And a second ballot measure asks the voters whether to authorize the state to impose a fuel tax indexing on the state's portion for the period beginning January 1, 2017, and ending January 31, 2026. The indexing, so what does this mean to the average taxpayer? We've run some calculations and using some averages for vehicle types and miles traveled. This will cost a family with one car $16.35 per year for the first year. In year two, it would cost $33.64 per year, and in year three, a total of $51.95 per vehicle in that third year. Right now, we are working with our Public Works Directors and all of your staffs to finalize a recommended list of projects that would be associated with this, and we would be able to bond for about $700 million worth of work if we were to be allowed to index for three years. With that, if there's any questions.
Comments or questions from the Board? Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Quigley, why did the legislation come down with two-thirds approval by the Board of County Commissioners? How did that happen?
That was one of the agreements that was made with the legislature and the governor.
Then also, we're not going to see any of this money for quite some time. Should it be approved?
No, actually, if this is approved, then we will be able to bond against it, and we'll actually have projects out by spring of next year.
Okay. Jobs, oh, absolutely, jobs. And that's the whole front of this, is job creation and getting, I don't know about the rest of you, but when you cruise through through the spaghetti bowl, what do you think of in rush hour traffic, as you're moving maybe 10 miles an hour, Director Montalban? You know, and the project list is huge, and the opportunities here for us to get these projects out on the streets and actually get the private sector back on its feet again in regards to construction and heavy highway, we've got this golden opportunity. So, I think we have to grasp this now and run with this, Ms. Quigley. So, I stand ready to serve in any capacity I can to persuade some of our board members of the county commission to move in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
There was a recent study that was just released from Brookings Institution. It had to do with local governments actually having to step up to fill the gap where the federal government has really not met the needs of the local communities, whether it's transportation dollars or many other areas. And this is just another example of where we've had to seek and find solutions to solve the issues in our own communities. We have road needs, and I think with the presentation that you made previously, we have, what, $20 million a year currently to be able to address our transportation needs, where in the past, we've had about $160 million a year to address those concerns. That's, that's a daunting loss of resources that, you know, we can address so many issues, whether it's the Neon, Project Neon in downtown Las Vegas, or finishing the Beltway, or doing some things in each of the various communities, or the I-11, which is going to bring such economic opportunity and gain to our state and to our region and to our community as well. So, I absolutely support it, and I would encourage the county commission to endorse this as well. And whatever you need, let us know.
Thank you.
Commissioner June Kiliani.
Thank you. I would echo that. It's, I think the compromise that was done is because some folks felt that legislatively, we should just go to a vote of the people. But that really, you have to govern and be willing to take the tough decisions. And, and so the compromise was, if the commission votes, and I hope we do, then we can begin collecting that money, put projects on the street, prove it out to the constituents that we're using the money wisely, that it's actually going to infrastructure, it's creating jobs, and then ask them to hopefully continue the program. So, I think it was a reasonable compromise, but that's a valid question on why it morphed into that part of it. But I would have to say, too, when you have 16 of 17 counties doing it, shame on us for not having jumped on in 2005. Hopefully, we learned that in the, even if it doesn't affect you right now, get your name in that legislation so you don't have to rethink it. It's like Washoe County with their schools. They took themselves out of my bill. I had every county in it for doing the rollover tax to build school construction, and they refused and took their names out. Now, 13 years later, they're putting their name back in. So, we have to learn from that part of it. That said, and I'm not a fan of sales tax, I just don't think, and I think even the fuel tax, the federal government has to look at how we fund our infrastructure for roads. If we want to increase mobility, we want to increase different types of, of moving around. Just using fuel tax is short-sighted. And so, that's got to be down the road as a policy decision. But this is what's available to us. It's also what's available that can create, hopefully, $700 million and maybe more in bonding capacity, so we can actually get roadwork going now, but also get people back to work. And I think that that's, that's a win-win for everybody in the long run. So, you know, feel free to talk to our colleagues on the commission, because we hope that they will see the light of that as well. Many of them just were not familiar, and we, as Commissioner Brown had said, we didn't have them inundated while this was moving through the legislature, because we were hoping it would pass, but we, now they have to be briefed on what the benefits are of it in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
If I could add, just, it might be worth not only looking at what that $700 million means, but also in terms of recirculating in the economy, the long-term implications to our economy in Southern Nevada, households, you know, new homes being purchased because folks have jobs. And I think that those implications are significant.
I agree, and we've actually received voluntarily offers from local economists who say, "We will do that for you. This is important enough that we, we want to help you, and we'll do that study for you."
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next slide. We're happy to announce the RTC, RTC's efforts to infuse art into the South Strip Transfer Terminal. These efforts are complete, and here's a slide of one of the artworks that we've got. On permanent display is a mural and art tiles showcasing the importance of transit within our community and the RTC's partnership with the Clark County School District. More importantly, the artwork will be a welcoming statement to hundreds of Las Vegas visitors who come through the Transit Terminal monthly. Victoria Gildner, an art teacher from Mac Middle School, and thirty, her 32 students brightened the terminal with this wall mural. And just last week, next slide, Ernie Ashby, an Orr Middle School art teacher, and students with the After-School All-Stars Program adorned the terminal with decorative ceramic tiles. They made signifying peace. Thank you to all of our student artists who helped make our transit terminals more beautiful. Next, I'm going to turn this portion over to Assistant General Manager MJ Maynard, who's going to brief you on our service changes and transition update.
The RTC's next service change is coming up, it's July 7. Some of the changes include, we will be eliminating barrier-free service on Boulder Highway to include the Boulder Highway Express, the Henderson Downtown Express. We're also eliminating barrier-free service on the Sahara Express, and that is due to an increased loss of fare revenue and an increased cost of fare enforcement. Additionally, we're going to take the 402 and merge that with the HDX to provide faster service for our customers traveling to and from downtown Henderson and Boulder City. We do have some good news. We are going to be adding back into the service an increase in some frequencies and span of service for some of the busiest routes in the system, and that's due to the uptick in our sales tax. July 7 will also eliminate the Pair Transit Unlimited Monthly Pass and instead offer the 46 Ride Paperless Pass and the 22 Ride Paperless Pass. Since the board approved this policy change in May of 2012, we have reached out to our Pair Transit customers every 90 days to remind them of the upcoming change, and will continue to do so until that change takes place on July 7. The transition status update. So, we've been working with Veolia, Keolis, and MV, and they've been keeping us abreast of all of their efforts concerning the transition. As a matter of fact, we meet with MV and Keolis every single Monday to discuss what's going on. As an update, the mechanic shift bid was completed last Thursday. Unfortunately, there were some mechanics that did not receive a bid. And MV and Keolis actually have just reached out to these mechanics in an effort to try and gauge them, offer some sort of employment, and that began yesterday. They are meeting with the union today to discuss a possible resolution to get those mechanics back to work when this transition starts. The operator's shift bid occurred last weekend, that was last Saturday and Sunday. According to the union, Keolis and MV operators were required to submit their bid in person or by proxy, and approximately 800 operators did that. And all Veolia operators who submitted a bid are currently being processed for employment with either contractor. I would also like to let the board know about the major service delays we experienced last week. Due to the excessive heat wave combined with the bid process, it made it incredibly difficult to make service. Approximately 40% of operators called off on Saturday, and approximately 57% of the operators called off on Sunday due to the bid shift process. These call-outs and severe weather inconvenience hundreds of our transit customers. Our staff is working to ensure that we have the available vehicles as the heat, they're already in our summer months, that we have available vehicles to handle that. We're also working on our contractor to ensure that we have enough operators to cover those shifts. I'd like to recognize Veolia. This past weekend, they jumped through hoops. The staff was incredible. Supervisors were driving buses. Operators were working double overtimes. Staff that had the day off came in. It was, it was a hurt, it was an effort that, just very thankful to them for their efforts.
Okay. And with that, I'd...
Commissioner June Kiliani.
Thank you. Okay, so, the mechanics went to bid on the 6th of June?
On Thursday, yes, Thursday.
On Thursday. And so, they were supposed to pick a slot, correct?
Correct.
So, what happened that some of them didn't get to pick a slot?
Well, I believe that, you know, Veolia had a certain business model, a number of mechanics that they needed.
Right.
MV and Keolis, some of that had to do with maybe not, they didn't need as many A operators as the previous contractor. I do know that, at the last minute, that the union decided to change the process. Initially, the mechanics were supposed to, it was their seniority within their classification that would be the first criteria to receive a bid with their higher date, their higher date second. I think I'm getting that right. But bottom line is, it's some of the operators that, maybe they'd been a classification, they were, they'd been with Veolia for quite a while, they were new in that classification. Because of that, they lost out the opportunity to, to receive a bit, a shift bid, if in fact, there were more mechanics needed than the positions that were available.
Okay. So, part of it, but seniority was always the key piece. So, ATU changed the seniority poll?
Not, not so much, seniority absolutely is key, but ATU changed, the higher date was now the first consideration, rather than the seniority within the classification.
So, that could have hurt those individuals, then?
Yes, yes.
And with no disrespect, how did, how did ATU get to be in that process to be able to change what the process was?
Well, the ATU and MV and Keolis signed a memorandum of agreement to post a master shift bid. The ATU autonomously, without notifying MV and Keolis, changed the procedure the Wednesday night before the shift bid took place on Thursday.
Okay, and so then that may have caused more disruption. So, you have both your operators, their bids would be prior to the mechanics' bids?
Their bids came after, they, they came after.
Oh, they came after the mechanics' bids. And so, so how were operators chosen?
By seniority.
Have higher date, or?
Higher date.
Okay. Do they have a classification, or they, it didn't affect them the same way it did as a mechanic?
That's correct.
Because a mechanic depends on what type of skill set they had?
You are correct.
Okay, so that's, so I understand that part of it. Okay. I think it's just, well, we'll have more conversation about that, but I do think it doesn't do the employees any good to give mixed messages or to change things midstream, because I think, whether it was well-intentioned or not, it definitely had an impact on some of those folks, and that's unfortunate.
Thank you.
I'd just like to emphasize for the board, and I know you all know this already, never in the history of the United States have we taken a contract of this size and magnitude and not only split it, but then award it to non-incumbents. And so, there is no how-to book. There is no set of rules or recommended procedures for how we do this. We are really lucky that all three of the vendors that we are working with, Veolia, MV, and Keolis, have gone above and beyond in terms of the spirit of cooperativeness and sharing information and trying to make this as smooth as they possibly can for the riders in Southern Nevada.
At some point, will we discuss, the heat is another factor, and, and because we're, apparently, we're short operators because of, because of the picks? Is that what was happening?
It was a combination of short operators, issues with some of the vehicles, mechanics, it was really a perfect storm for some...
Unfortunately.
Yes.
And maybe at some point, we can have a discussion of, because we're Vegas and how hot it gets here, are there protocols maybe we could put in place that if somebody knows they're two hours late, how the, how the folks waiting there know? Maybe we use those hosts like we've done in the past?
Ambassadors.
Maybe we can even have them give notes to people that were employees trying to get to work, so that it's verified for them. Maybe there's water pools, we can, but we should probably take a look at that, and then make sure that we're dealing with our elderly and people with little, little kids or babies, to make sure that they're not stranded out there for three and four hours, which I'm told in some cases may have happened. So, that just might be something we want to talk with this board. And I do have, I do want to acknowledge, as you did, Tina, that Veolia has been, even though you're not, you didn't win the bid, and, you know, it is what it is, thank you for working with us as, as well as you have been. I think that that needs to be noted.
Appreciate, appreciate it, and I just, I think we all know that, that we do have some challenges ahead. It's not going to go off absolutely perfect, and so we will be reporting to you regularly on what's going on with the transition and how our riders are being affected. So, you will be getting a lot of emails, either from me or from MJ to keep you apprised, so you know how to communicate with your constituents. And with that, that concludes your general manager's report. Next item, item number three is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report.
Thank you, Tina. I wanted to report on a similar things, the legislative update on a couple of bills that were important to NDOT that impact the RTC of Southern Nevada. First, Senate Bill 322, which was sponsored by Senator Menendo. The governor's office did reach out to Senator Menendo, made a suggested amendment, which he accepted, and it went forward. Basically, the Attorney General will step off of the Transportation Board, and a new member representing District 1, which is the Southern Nevada region, will go on to the board. So, additional representation from Southern Nevada on the Transportation Board for Southern Nevada.
Rudy, do you have any insight as to what the process will be for selecting that person?
The legislature will offer a slate of candidates to the governor to consider, then the governor will appoint one of those. And that is on, in January of 2014 that that will occur, that the new member will take their place on the board. The other thing to report on the legislature was Assembly Bill 18, which deals with road transfers and road relinquishments. We worked with the League of Cities, NACO, and several other stakeholders to come up with a bill that was, had, was equitable to both parties. We know that the concerns, particularly with rural counties, is about not having enough revenue to take over new highways and new streets from, that are currently state highways. So, what was passed was a bill that says that the State Transportation Board will adopt policies that will be equitable. Basically, we'll work with our stakeholder groups, NACO, the STACK Committee, which is the statewide transportation technical advisory committee, and that's where you see the RTCs represented in that committee and working with NDOT, and the League of Cities, to basically write up some policies that we'll take to the Transportation Board for adoption. But it has that two-way street and equity in it, so that if NDOT is going to transfer a road to a county or a city, that either we repave it, or we give, offer them the equivalent amount of money to do that themselves, to repave the road, bring it up to an acceptable condition for maintenance. I would like to also update you on Project Neon. This week, the Transportation Board met on Monday. Next slide, please. And this is kind of an overview of, an aerial of Project Neon, a depiction that shows widening of I-15 from Sahara to the Spaghetti Bowl, reconstruction of the Charleston Boulevard interchange on I-15, and connecting the US 95 HOV or carpool lanes to the I-15 express lanes through a flyover bridge. One of the things that we approved, next slide, was the addition of an additional Phase 4. So, what I showed you on the first slide was Phase 1 and 3, and we convinced the Transportation Board that it would be economical and prudent to include Phase 4. So, Phase 4 is on, if you're coming from US 95 through the Spaghetti Bowl and you're headed towards the strip, you know that you have a lot of merging situations, a lot of lane changes occur there between the Spaghetti Bowl and the Charleston interchange. This will be fixed by Phase 4, which basically braids. It's called a braided ramp. So, if you look at Rancho on US 95 or Ann Road and US 95, you have ramps that one goes over, one goes under, so you don't have that merge situation. Much safer, much better flow of traffic in that area. So, we're going to add Phase 4. The additional cost, we looked at that, and it is still economical and cost-effective to include Phase 4 in going forward in a public-private partnership, or P3. Next slide. So, this kind of shows the, if we had built Project Neon Phase 1 and 3, this is what it would look like. And basically, it's a level of service, but red is, is bad, green is good, as we all know. Go to the next slide. And you see with, including the, next slide, including that Phase 4 in there gives tremendous improvement to flow of traffic in the southbound, where you have the 95 traffic merging onto I-15 southbound. So, we feel that we can live without the Phase 5, the northbound widening. We can't afford all that at the same time as Phase 1 and 3, like we could Phase 4, but we feel that it yields tremendous benefits to include it. Next slide. So, ultimately, the, what the, the options that we brought forward to the Transportation Board were for either a traditional design-build project with state bonding, it was the cheapest, but what it results in is, it was too costly in the early years to, to fund. It really impacts our base program. And one of the things that we wanted to do with Project Neon is not affect our, our basic capital improvement program for the state. So, those, the basic capital improvement program includes projects here in Southern Nevada and in Washoe County. and in Washoe County and the rest of the state. We didn't, we want to basically look at what we spent traditionally without the, our, the stimulus funds, the LVCVA funds that we received in the, in the past few years. So basic program, basic revenues. The other options for the public-private partnership is concessionaire comes in, loans to state the money for a very long, much longer term than a 20-year bond that we traditionally do through state financing. So a 35-year term makes it more affordable in the near term and the annual payments where what we did was to lock in what our, we would recommend to the board a $90 million in the, in the highway fund for the state. And that's what the legislature, legislature has also felt is a comfortable number to live with in the highway fund. $90 million stays in that fund and we can, we basically looked at how much money was left over on how much we would pay a P3 partner. And we found that, that's when we, we saw that if we bonded to acquire the right-of-way for this additional Phase Four, we could actually be cost-effective, still afford it, and not exceed the, the level of bond payments that we've traditionally had for the state in the, in the past few years. We've, we've had from 80 to 90 million dollars in bond payments. When we did the traditional state bonding to do a design-build project with financing over 20 years, that raised it above $100 million, it was not cost-effective, not affordable. So bottom line was that the, the board approved this hybrid concept, including Phase Four, doing the hybrid with the combination of state funding and a TFI loan, which is a federal loan program that's provided under the current Surface Transportation Bill. Through a combination of that financing arrangement with the, with the private partner and the, the bonding, it was very affordable, very, especially in the near term, the next five, six years, very affordable for the department to deliver our base program on top of, of this Project NEON Phase One, Three, and Four. As far as the schedule for Project NEON, we're looking at development of an RFP now that the board's given approval. Obviously, since it includes bonding, we have to go to the interim finance committee because the, the two, the biennial budget that we submitted to the, the legislature that they just approved did not include bonding. So it's a, a new change. We feel that because of the creation of jobs, the operational improvements and the safety benefits on I-15 and 95, that it's, it's a good investment in the transportation system in the Southern Nevada. So we believe that the IFC will approve the bonding concept and allow us to go forward to enter into a public-private partnership. But the schedule for the development of the RFP, we feel that we can work with the industry, all the teams that have been assembled for, to chase this project. It's a very large project, but we think that we can work it out to where we have the RFP to the board for, basically get the board approval in February of 2014 to issue the RFP, get that RFP out there, do the interaction with the teams, and eventually do our selection process, take a selected, preferred P3 team to the board for approval in August of 2014. And then by November of 2014, we have to basically close of, of that contract, that deal. And we definitely will rely on, on our advisors, just as the RTC, when they looked at the, the Boulder City Bypass Future I-11 project, had to look at outside advisors for these types of deals because they're very structured and you have to protect the taxpayers' interests. So we have a financial advisor, Ernst &amp; Young, and a legal advisor, Nosiman, that's going to help us out in development of the P3 contract. But all in all, we believe that if we move forward on our schedule, designing and construction of this huge project would, would commence in, in early 2015 and it'd be good for the economy of, of Southern Nevada and good for the state of Nevada, just, not, not just for the commuters in Southern Nevada, but also the movement of freight along that I-15 corridor. So any questions from the board members on Project NEON update?
Comments or questions from the board? Councilman Ross, Commissioner Jun Kiliani, and Councilwoman Tarkanian.
So Rudy, based on the data you've given us, getting through all of the processes to get to the financial wherewithal to get this going, when do you anticipate, and I'm not going to hold you to it, a shovel in the ground on Project NEON?
We think that the early part of 2015 will primarily be designed, obviously in, in chasing the project, they develop, these teams develop, design to a certain level, but not to the extent where it's, because we only pay a certain stipend, it's not going to offset the cost of the design. So I think that it'll be about three months after, so that probably the second quarter of 2015, you actually see shovels in the ground.
Okay.
But you will see utility relocations. So it'll appear that the project's under construction, but that's a utility relocation, such as the power line.
That's just getting prepped for the reconstruction of the Project NEON. I think that's significant, can kind of get us all an idea of when can, we can expect a larger nightmare in transportation.
Yes. I know that the F Street traffic control changes are affecting traffic currently on I-15.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gee?
Thank you. That was part of where I was going to go, is when, when, what funding do you have, funding stream-wise, to even do Phase One and Three? And then have we re-studied capacity to see if other parts of that are really not necessary anymore? Because I do think that some of the, the neighborhood folks that came, I know to, to meetings that Lois and I attended, were concerned about is just adding more miles in lieu of really finding other modes of transportation. And so I think One and Three rightly deal with a safety component, more so than adding just another roadway, which I think combines with that. So I just was curious, because if you drive around town now, with unfortunately the loss of folks that moved out of town after the slowdown job-wise and housing-wise, it has lessened, lessened some of the capacity issues on our roadways. So I'm hoping we do continually reevaluate that as we go forward to make sure we're not just adding another lane for the sake of adding another lane, whereas maybe we might do a, a light rail or something along the, you know, something different that's there. And I think that was what was discussed at one point, wasn't it Rudy?
Yes. In response to Commissioner Jun Kiliani, what, basically the revenue that's going to pay back the, the financing of this project is our traditional fuel tax revenue. But the, the other issue of, is it the right-sized project or are we building it too big? We actually looked at, at that issue early on when we were looking at the affordability of the project and whether it could be built in, in smaller phases, it could be more affordable. And also the, the designer, C.H. Toomah Hill, did some efforts based on the preliminary work from another consultant that did the initial work for Project NEON. And they, they had a huge amount of savings, kind of changed the design for the Martin Luther King flyover, so now it's an at-grade street. So they, they made some tremendous changes to, to reduce the costs and reduce the footprint of the project. The other thing is that we're obviously looking at the, the right-of-way acquisition is a huge deal and, and working through that process using the, the federal regulations as far as procurement of right-of-ways is a very strict process. We're doing that and definitely doing the outreach to the, the neighborhoods, the, the businesses that are affected by the project.
Okay. And then F Street, I know they had the groundbreaking a couple of months ago?
Yes.
Month ago, something like that now? And so that is underway as design and actual shovel in the, in the roadway. I know it's going to have some impact on, as you said, but I think that community, but we'll be thrilled to finally have that reopened, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Tarkanian?
My question was asked and answered.
Very good.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And that concludes the Director's Update from NDOT.
Not, not quite.
Oh.
Boulder's, in the absence of Mayor Tobler, I feel obligated to ask, updates on Phase One?
Phase One, we are, we made a counteroffer to one of the property owners that, that we might end up in court with to resolve, but that's the acquisition that's necessary to build the frontage road. We have been working out the issues with the other two major property owners, the Railroad Pass Casino and the, the business that's there along US-95 where the future interchange is going to be with US-95. So we're proceeding with the fencing and the plant salvage contract and we anticipate that we'll do the frontage road project subsequent to that completion. And utility relocations are continuing as well. We definitely will try to align our projects as, one of the things that we appreciated was, was General Manager Tina Quigley's consistency in her presentations on AB 413, that, that the future I-11 project was a critical project for Southern Nevada for Phase Two that RTC had studied for possible toll road. So going forward, we will definitely marry up our schedules for delivery of our Phase One with the, the Phase Two project and make sure that if there's any acceleration required, that we will marry those up so that it's a seamless completion of, of both projects should the AB 413, 413 money kind of achieve acceleration of Phase Two.
Councilman Ross?
Mr. Chair, can we direct staff to, maybe at our next board meeting, to bring us back a, a design or some kind of picture of what that looks like so we can have an idea as commissioners?
The I-11, the Boulder Street Bypass I-11 project?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One other, Rudy, as far as the Project NEON, now the, you indicated that you've been given approval to move forward in the development of the RFP?
Yes.
So that is going to go in parallel to your presentation to the interim finance?
Yes.
When do they meet?
They meet, I believe, in about a month. What the governor has directed us to do is to meet with each member of, of the interim finance committee to explain the details of, and the benefits of Project NEON and, because it, it is very complex and we feel that it would be better if they're, we brief them individually to, to better inform them of, of the details of the project and the benefits of the project, and then take it to the, the formal IFC committee in a, for the formal approval of the bonding scenario.
Would you, would you mind doing that same briefing to RTC?
Yes.
So everybody is hearing the same thing and then certainly you, staff can, can brief the board. So it goes to the State Transportation Board, January 2014, anticipated for an RFP approval?
February would be, early February would be the Transportation Board approval of the RFP for issuance for competitive procurement.
And then you indicated August 2014 would be what?
That'd be approval of the selected team, the P3 team.
And then November?
November would be basically close of the contract. So we negotiate the contract after the selection is approved and bring that back a few months later for approval of the actual P3 contract.
And then ultimately, you said there's some early part of design work that would be done, but to follow up, Councilman Ross?
Yes.
A notice to proceed as far as the construction side is anticipated, second quarter 2015?
I would, they get notice to proceed at the same time, they get notice to proceed for the design and construction at the same time, but, but it takes a few months of, of actual design and approval of the design packages before they can put the shovels in the ground. So I was thinking about the second quarter of 2015.
And I think this board will give you that discretion, but we're going to hear and state publicly that a second quarter, I mean June 30th, 2015?
That'd be great.
That Project NEON will be under construction, in addition to all that early work being done.
Yes, and this is a very aggressive schedule, so we'll hear from the P3 teams that are chasing the project, whether there's any kind of leeway needed, but we'll definitely keep the RTC board apprised of any kind of changes to that schedule.
Thank you Rudy, for, for the good work in Carson City and certainly for that update.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman?
So that means for those people who live along that line, we can tell them June 30th is the expected date for a shovel at least in the ground. 2015, what did I say, 2030? Oh, 2015.
Yes, but also it'd be wise, I think Rudy indicated that there's going to be some utility relocation, some other work done, so they, you should make them aware of that. So they don't think that the moving of the power pole is Project NEON in its full intent?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your next item, item number four, is to conduct your first comment period for citizens' participation.
Thank you. Our first public comment period is limited to items only on today's agenda. There's a second public comment period at the end of the meeting for those that wish to speak to non-agended items. Our first speaker, Dean Kelly, agenda items 12, 13, 14, and 15. Good morning.
Okay, there we are. Good morning.
Yeah.
Still morning. Mostly, mostly my participation is in the form of questions. I'm not perhaps needing some, some of the details regarding the, the issues of the, the Harmon connection finally, so that Harmon is going to run basically all the way through from the far east to the far west now, or eventually, that's, that's your, that's your project. Bus turnouts at Sunset and LVB, what are the, where, where are we specifically talking The, the signal at Gillespie and Sunset is long overdue. So I'd like, appreciate a little information about those particular items.
Okay. Mr. Kelly, if you would, if you can stay to the end of the meeting, we'll have staff sit down with you and, and go over those specific details, if that's okay?
Bye.
Very good. Thank you. Brian Edwards on item number 40.
Good morning. My name's Brian Edwards, owner of RL Bus Sales here in Las Vegas. I've got an item on the consent agenda and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the commission for, and the staff of RTC for giving us an opportunity to interact with these service providers for the RTC. And I want to make a special thank you for Fran and Melissa that are here from the ITN. We've had a great opportunity of serving and working with those folks over the last year, almost two years, so it's, it's been great, but I wanted to thank you again. Thank you.
Not so fast. I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, certainly with the partnership with the RTC, but Brian and the firm were selected as the State of Nevada Small Business, and if I get it wrong, Small Business of the Year Award, and they're heading back, I think, next week or?
Yeah, we're actually leaving Saturday and we're going to fly and spend a couple of days early so we can actually tour Washington, because me and my partner, we've actually never been to Washington, so we're excited about being able to go back there.
Small Business Administration holds this event annually every year and they are representing the state of Nevada as the award winner this year. Congratulations.
Yes, we are. Thank you. Thank you.
We're so, we're so smart for picking them.
Brian Patchett on item number 39. Brian, we had the ballgame the other night.
Thank you so much. Wonderful.
Brian, Brian is the CEO of Easter Seals for those that are not aware, here locally.
Thank you so much for, for that introduction, Mr. Chairman. Brian Patchett with Easter Seals, as you said, and I just wanted to say a couple of things. First off, we have been in a wonderful partnership with ITN for, gosh, I think over four years now with Fran and her group, building a transportation, starting to build some transportation for folks that are seniors and folks that have disabilities. And on a personal note, I, I should say, I've been legally blind since I was seven. Transportation's a big issue for those of us that have visual disabilities. And so to be a part of what we've been doing with alternative transportation services has been truly wonderful for me to see and, and, and to understand what the benefits are. Easter Seals has been involved with transportations for individuals with disabilities for a lot of years, not just here locally, but also across the nation with our Project Action Group that really provides technical support on serving folks with disabilities, like I said, nationwide. And we're, we're really looking forward to opportunities to serve more individuals with disabilities through the alternative transportation services. And in fact, I think what we're talking about, item number 39 on the agenda, that specifically gives us the ability in partnership with ITN to serve folks that come to Easter Seals to get served, to, to get different programs and services that we provide. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. And it takes two to tangle, the partnership with the RTC, certainly appreciate everything you have done for Easter Seals and our community. And I'll take this opportunity, staff, the, these type awards and these type contracts, we don't read about in the paper, but it's indicative of, of what we do deep within our community. And not just with Easter Seals, but with so many wonderful local community organizations, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I add to that?
Please.
You know, I, I do absolutely agree with that. I think it's been wonderful. I think the vision that the RTC has and, and the commission here has of the partnership with folks like us is, is just wonderful and we're meeting the needs out there and hopefully doing it in a very efficient manner. So thank you very much.
Commissioner?
Brian, it's Commissioner Jun Kiliani, it's good to see you. What's the
Brian, it's Commissioner June Kiliani, it's good to see you. What's the status of the, the issue that Sam Lieberman had come to talk to some of us about with the lease, with the State of Nevada?
Yes, we, we actually are meeting with the governor's office on the 18th to see if we can finish resolving that. It didn't get resolved in the session.
Okay. And just want to thank you as well. Actually, Vince Trigg was an old friend of mine that actually started the program that Easter Seals then took over after he, well, no, prior to him passing away, I guess, but as a teacher of disabled students, I, we appreciate your work and your connection with us on making sure that we're getting people around the valley that have special needs. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Jose Mendoza on items 38, 43, 44, and 45. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jose Mendoza, Jr., President for ATU Local 1637. First of all, I would like to say that I resent the fact, on behalf of the bargaining unit, that we be accused of everything of what happened over the weekend and during the maintenance.
You can share those comments at the second.
And I will, and I will. I just resent the fact that we're being accused of something that we didn't do. But anyway, on item 38, you have a desert area rapid transit, and our question to the RTC, is this company in the future going to be used for any fixed routes, such as what HDX was given to the Southern Coalition Transportation Nevada? That's our question to the RTC.
Is that on everything?
On number 38.
Okay.
Did it answer or you?
We'll, we'll answer those.
Okay, on, okay, on 43, 44, and 45, total $700,000, the ATU wants to know if any of this money is federally funded.
What's, what was the follow-up question?
On items 43, 44, and 45, it's over $700,000, and our question is, any of this money federally funded?
Right. And that's a yes or no. Can we provide a yes or no?
No.
Okay. Can we provide a yes or no on 38?
And the reason why we ask is because what happened to the HDX and 402.
And if we can't do a yes or no, then we'll take that later and provide Mr., okay.
Yeah, 38 is part of the ATS program, so that's, that is certain folks with disabilities.
We have the question on record and we'll get that information and answer to Mr. Mendoza at a later time.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dwight Bashir, the agenda item is on service disruption, so I think that may be
That's a yes.
Number two. Is there anyone else wishing to speak specifically on an agenda item posted today? And let me ask, are these that indicate after the GM's report, are they one or two?
Two.
Very good. We'll close this portion of the public hearing, a public comment period. Ms. Quigley.
Okay. Your, next on your agenda are your consent items. We would like to pull item number 25, and Rudy, Director of Nevada Department of Transportation, has a slight change to item number 24 you'd like to address.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. I wanted to amend agenda item 24 on the consent agenda to remove the modification to RTP project number 235, which funds the NDOTS Freeway Service Patrol Program for motor assistance in the Las Vegas Valley. We were able to renegotiate, actually re-procur this contract and we could stay within the original amount that was in the tip.
With, with that amendment, is that fine to continue?
It is.
To take action on that?
It is.
So we'll include that amended item number 24 as the overall consent. And Ms. Quigley, you indicated item number?
We'd like to pull item 25 and we will be, bring it back to you next month.
Okay. And? Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We do not have any non-consent items today, so your next item is your last citizens' participation, item number 57.
This is the time set aside for public comments. I do have some that have placed a card in, we'll start with those, and then if anyone else wishes to speak, we'll go through the cards and then call you after that. Mr. Dwight Bashir.
Good morning. It must have been a time like this past weekend when Lucius Seneca said that it is a rough road that leads to the heights of greatness. Good morning, Chairman Brown, members of the commission. My name is Dwight Bashir. I'm the Executive Vice President and General Manager for Keolis Transit America, assigned to Las Vegas operation. I've been in this industry for 30 years, and I can tell you that I've done a lot of things in my career that I'm very proud of. Last weekend was not one of them. First off, I'd like to apologize to the RTC staff, to this commission, and to any of the riders that were impacted by the disruption in service over this past weekend. One of the things that we knew, we knew that the operators were going to be very anxious to make their selections because they were not only selecting their assignments, they were selecting an employer, and with that came a, a great deal of, of stress and anxiety on them. And so I apologize for that as well. However, we worked with the union to create a proxy system precisely to avoid having this type of thing happen. The intent of the proxy system was to allow the operators to bid without having to be present, and this is something that is done throughout the industry, so it's, it's nothing new and it's something that these operators, I'm sure, were accustomed to. We did not want them, we did not intend them, intend for them to leave their buses, abandon their buses to bid. Unfortunately, we now realize that we fell a little bit short. This alternative that we presented to the operators was not, in my opinion, presented clearly enough or strongly enough. We needed them to understand that it was not necessary for them to be present to bid. So with that, we take full responsibility for the breakdown in communication, and we immediately, on Saturday, tried to adopt a plan that would prevent that from happening on Sunday, but from what I understand, it was even worse on Sunday. In the future, we will be taking a more proactive approach, I promise you that, not only to communicate vital information to our operators, but also to follow up to make sure that our operators and employees fully understand the information that is being disseminated to them. We have a, an obligation to do that. We did not do that this time. Again, my apologies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Councilwoman.
I'd just like to say that that was an impressive bunch of comments there. They're much appreciated and very respected. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner.
And thank you very much, but I'm still trying to understand what you, what exactly you're apologizing for. What was changed that you felt needed to be rectified? It's okay.
And let's, let's keep this
Just to that.
Discussion at a very high level. I don't want to go too far during the public comment, deferring to legal, of course.
Understood. I think what I'm referring to is that our intent was to allow the proxy system to basically control and allow the operators to study ahead of time, all of the assignments. Now, there are a lot of them, I get that, but we provided bid books to everybody so that we believe that it would have been proper for them to mark their choices down without having to abandon their assignments for the day. I believe, and what I'm apologizing for, is that we, as a company, along, and I don't want to speak for any other companies, but we as a company could have done a better job communicating our expectation
Okay.
That they not
Have to come down.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Dwayne, and I apologize on the last name, Eskira?
Dwayne Eskira, you want to be beat?
So I got the name right, but I got the person wrong.
He won, so I want to be him. If I, if I may, and I could probably help speed this up for you, on our, on our behalf, if I could invite my boss up with me, we could just make a few quick comments and we'll be, be out of your hair. Mr. Westbrook's in there as well, I believe. I was briefed outside that he goes first.
And I had probably fumbled these cards, so I apologize. And you can go to the other mic. You can share the mics, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ken Westbrook and I'm the President and Chief Operating Officer of Veolia Transportation. And the reason I'm here today is, is because I, unfortunately, I wasn't here this weekend, but I got a number of phone calls and a tremendous number of emails from our employees who were dealing with the ill-timed board pick, trying to make sure that we were able to render as much service as we could, being some 119 operators short on Saturday and over 150 operators short on Sunday. If you take an operator and you figure an operator works eight hours, that's how many hours that could have been missed had some employees not gone above and beyond what they did. And I want to thank those employees. That's my main purpose here today, is, I wasn't planning on being here today. After this weekend, I thought it important for me to come out, and this was my only opportunity to really publicly thank these employees for the great job that they did. We had dispatchers, we had supervisors, we had drivers who worked an inordinate amount of time. There were one, there was one particular individual, I hate to call out names, but this individual has been here in, in Las Vegas with Veolia for about three months, but has been with Veolia for a number of years, and his dedication and his spirit is part, part of what makes Veolia the successful company that it is. Ed Bernardcheck is here, and I'm not sure he's still here now, he may have gone back to work, but Ed is the one that orchestrated putting as much service as we were able to put on the street under those extremely difficult circumstances. Did a magnificent job, and I know Ed will say, it was not just Ed, and it was not just Ed, there were a lot of people that spent a lot of time doing that. I worried them to death, calling them on the phone and asking them what's going on every few hours as I could to try and keep, keep abreast of things. Dwayne was, was also instrumental in working this and Larry Kucher and his staff. So I want to publicly thank those employees for what they did, because there were a lot of operators who came in, worked their shift, went home, got a little bit of rest, came back and worked another shift. There are operators who drove extra shifts, extra pieces of work, one more time around on the route, and it was magnificent, the job that they did. We talked to earlier, Assistant General Manager MJ Maynard talked a little bit earlier about the weather, and, and I want to publicly thank the maintenance staff for what they did, because during all of that difficult time, it was 112 degrees. I'm from Chicago now, and I've, I've never had 112. I think I've had 12 degrees, but I've never had 112 degrees. Buses that run at, at 108 degrees, fine, don't run very well at 112 for some reason, but that's, that's the quirkiness of the buses. But our maintenance staff did a spectacular job getting the fleet back up and getting them ready, at the same time going through the transition of inspections, and I, I really want to publicly thank those guys as well. So thank you for, for allowing me to have this time, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, and, and RTC staff. Thanks very much.
And thank you for taking the time to come down.
Is that my time too?
No.
Twenty years ago, as the SVP for Veolia, I started a transit right here. So I have the, the, the poor job of having to, to provide a good transmission, transition and ultimately shut this project down. So it's pretty emotional for me. But what I will tell you, in 20 years that I've worked with this agency in one capacity or another, you need to be very proud of a few individuals. MJ, Cindy Wallace, Sandy Stank, just to name a few, are working the same hours. They're responsive, they're accessible, and, and I think the better word that I want to use is compassionate. I mean, we're not in a great spot here, and they are respectful throughout. So I wanted to mention those folks. You should be proud of them. Yeah? And, did you get my application? So having, you know, I, just, just make sure that they're recognized through all this, because they're putting in the same amount of hours. This is not a, a, a system that can be compared to others. There's a lot that goes into this thing, there's a tremendous amount of complexity, and we're also struggling with the fact that we've lost probably 25 to 30 people already to our competitors, and that's a huge brain drain. So for Ed to still put service out in the street with not having that talent available to him needs to be acknowledged as well, and I hope you will, you'll do that. But thank you for the time, appreciate it, and see you in a couple weeks.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Councilman Ross.
I think it's only appropriate for Veolia's benefit that we applaud them for their efforts, certainly this last weekend.
Wayne Fritz.
Good morning, Chairman Brown, members of the commission. I, I, my name is Wayne Fritz. I'm the Vice President and General Manager, effective July 7th at the Simmons IBMF facility, and, and I too would like to acknowledge Veolia and their efforts this past weekend. As a transfer professional, I can tell you that in observing what happened and their efforts, and especially the efforts of the dispatches, some of the folks in there, it's a job very, very well done, and very envious, actually. Excellent job. On behalf of MB Transportation, I am here this morning to apologize. I would like to apologize to the RTC as well as to the commu, community. As, as Dwight said, we did not do a very good job. There were service delays, there were issues that were also exacerbated by the heat. We certainly did not anticipate the high number of operators that would actually call off from work. We certainly had every reason to believe that they would submit proxies for their bids, because that's what they had done in the past. We assumed that by encouraging them to submit proxies and use that method, that they would do so. We were wrong. On behalf of MB Transportation, I take full responsibility for the miscalculation as well as for any interruptions that may have occurred by our miscalculation. I want to assure the board as well as the community that this will not reoccur. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan Muldower. Patricia Anderson.
Well, good morning, Patricia Anderson. We had a lot of things going on the last week or so. Number one, I feel, number one, that the Decatur, the double-decker buses, it's too warm for them. They go up the hill, what have you, the drivers are, are crav and doing a fantastic job, and they break, you know, they get overheated. The passengers go crazy, and I have, I, I know you told me not to get involved, I understand that, but I have to tell a few of them that the drivers, and they don't, they don't want the bus to break down, and it happens. So you have to be, you know, you have to be, you know, be considerate of the drivers. The mechanics, I don't know, like I said, I hearing that they're not, they don't have a position at this time, and they really need them, and they, oh, these are drivers that have been from CAT, I'm sure from CAT and from Veolia, and I really think that you really need to turn around again and keep them and work with them, because they know the buses. The Decatur Route, all routes have been kind of crazy, but Decatur Route, the people are disrespectful, what have you, concerned. I don't know if you realize what happened, the drivers have been, they've been cursed at, they have been spit on, and it's been pretty rough. This, the fact domains on the Ferengi Route, a driver really was abused. And this is things that, I mean, I was on the second bus, but the first bus and was really, police were there, paramedics, the whole nine yards. As I say, it's As I say, it's, the Charleston Express, they feel that's a party, they feel that they're drinking on it, they're doing everything, they're eating on the bus, whatever the case is, and I feel that they need to, we need to turn around again and get more authority on that one. They're disrespectful with that. I mean, these bus, like I said, the, I really feel, I mean, I feel that the old bus, the one oh nine buses, the, the longer buses need to go on these routes, the summertime, these, the double deckers are not going to work. And so I feel, and, uh, as far as the, 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 as far as they having the, their time, their time points, I think the time points need to be out of the, come out of the, you shouldn't have the time point, because the drivers are really, they've been driving, say, eight or nine hours, they need to stretch their legs, it's not fair to them. And I've talked to them, I mean, I said, you need to, you know, you know, I try to encourage them while I'm on the bus, because it's not fair to them. And they, and they need to just get at a bus stop and just stretch their legs, they don't have to be on the time point, we have to get to point A to point B. So anyway, as I say, hoping that we can get these, you know, straight, straightened out, and thank you very much, and I will have a good day, have a nice weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Alan's back, did he want to speak?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, no, thank you very much, I think we've said our, said our words.
Tough to make this one out, and I apologize. Shivali? What is it?
Arlene Shively.
Oh, first name, last, okay. Arlene Shively. Okay, what's going on out in the corridors? There must be something going on. All right, if, is there anyone else wishing to speak to the RTC this morning that has not filled out a card? Now's the opportunity.
Morning Commissioners, as earlier, earlier stated, perhaps somebody's given some wrong information as to what really happened. It's all about the implementation agreement that was signed between the parties, the ATU, Keolus, and MB. And as you remember, we were here last month asking that MB move forward and sign the agreement. Once it was signed, we moved forward on it. There's no excuses here, and don't blame the ATU. We did everything we had to do for your actions as to put us in this situation. We did seven hundred and ninety-seven operators in three minutes, and we instructed what they needed to do. We didn't tell them to stop, uh, the buses, we just told them they needed to do a proxy bid. For anybody to say otherwise, that's false. As for the maintenance people, the maintenance people, there's fourteen of them, they're not getting a job, because that's what they slotted, not because of a, of a date of hire, bid, or what have you. So somebody's giving some wrong, wrong information here. Let's get the facts. And the fact of the matter is, we're, we're going to be meeting today with MB and Keolus, and we hope we get these fourteen mechanics their jobs back. Not only that, is there's some monitors that are employed with Veolia, they're not going to have a job. So please, let's get the facts straight, and this is not our doing, we're only doing what RTC wants these contractors to do, and it's on you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the RTC?
Dean Kelly, again. It may not, it's been a while since I've been here. I was a former operator for ATC, ATC Vancom slash National Express of Veolia. Speaking to the point that Ms. Anderson made regarding the disrespect of drivers, I had a total of twelve years' service with the transit system here, and an additional eleven years in the taxi industry here. And eleven years, the taxi industry, the worst that I had was I was run out on a few times, where somebody says, "I'll be right back with the money," and, uh-uh, which meant I had to eat the fare. Specifically in the, in my, I, I did my twelve years in two stints. I worked for five years, I got canned because I messed up on attendance, they were a lot, nice enough to hire me back a year later, and I worked seven years until I could no longer pass the DOT to keep my job. In that last seven years, I was assaulted six times. And I've been called, and I've been called every, everything in the book, and some things that aren't even in the book. And I, and I've literally have driven, literally driven every route in the system that's been in existence since nineteen ninety-seven. So it doesn't matter what route you're on, doesn't matter the day of the week or the time of day, it's, oh, well, what do you know, you're just a bus driver. Well, as I like, as I would like to point out to most of the pa, most of the people that made those comments, yeah, but I'll bet you couldn't pass the first test necessary to get the job. And then see, what, driving test? I says, no, drug test. So it's simply a fact that, it's a, it's a condition of society. I've discovered over the, over the years, no matter what, what job I've been, and I've been in a number of fields, from education to security to transportation, to food service, that it appears that people who don't do the job know more about how the job is supposed to be done than the people who are doing it. And I don't, I think that's a crock. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sam Santoria, ATU Local sixteen thirty-seven. It seems like only yesterday we were here voicing our concerns about splitting the bus system. We were concerned that the jobs of a thousand employees would be in jeopardy, but both new contractors and the RTC said there was no reason to worry, because everyone would be hired. So now we are three weeks away from kickoff, and fourteen maintenance personnel, and about eighteen monitors, and other personnel still don't have a job on July seventh. So can someone tell those people when it's okay to worry? How many missed car payments until it's time to worry? Should they worry when they get a shut-off notice for the utilities, or wait until after the actual shut-off? Should they worry when there's an eviction notice on their front door, or should they wait until their belongings are out on the sidewalk? Should they worry when their children are crying because they're hungry and there's no food, or should they wait until Protective Services takes the kids away? They ask me, but I don't have the answer for them. But why doesn't the Board go behind closed doors to come up with an answer? I was told that the monitors were offered less pay and no benefits. If that's true, you should all be ashamed of yourselves. But in order to be ashamed, you would need a conscience, which seems to be lacking in all of your jobs. But here's one bit of good news to cheer you up. I was elected Vice President of ATU Local sixteen thirty-seven. Along with our president, I will be here the second Thursday of every month. And if you're not fond of him, remember this, he's the nice one. But on a positive note, this past weekend, the ATU with MB and Keolus had the operators pick the companies they wanted to work for, along with the routes they preferred. As you are aware, it was smooth as silk. Hopefully, in the future, the ATU, along with the contractors and the RTC, will work together for the betterment of the people of Las Vegas and the employees who maintain the buses, to the operators who are trusted with thousands of lives a day. We are in this together, whether you like it or not. And just to let you know, I was there with my president, we worked forty hours nonstop, me and him. All right, we got in forty-hour period, what took Veolia five days to accomplish, they would do bids of a hundred and fifty per day, which is nice, but we didn't have that time. Both of these companies were offered an implementation agreement to sign way back when, and they both refused, back and forth, I'm not signing, if he doesn't sign, why should I sign? And that's how it actually went. And now, when, after they both signed, now there's a time restraint, everything had to be done by June tenth. We did our part. So don't blame the bus service on us. This was your idea. Would you have rather had it in the weekday? How would you have done it? I don't know. But like I said, we didn't create the mess, you did, but you're the only ones not accepting the blame for it. I see Keolus up there apologizing. I don't know why they're apologizing, why is MB apologizing? Just keep heaping the blame on the ATU. And that's good, that you got somebody to blame, rather than yourselves. Keep making a lot of money, keep smiling.
Mr. Chairman, may I just speak for one minute?
Please. You actually have three.
Thank you. Well, I'll try to take just one.
Alan, just go to one of them.
Thank you.
And introduce yourself.
I'm General Counsel for Veolia Transportation, as most of you know. I've been the General Counsel for the last nine years, and, and I just wanted to say one thing that I hope is not redundant to what Mr. Westbrook and Mr. Eskerka just, just said. I was out of the room when they spoke. But what I'm most proud about in being part of Veolia Transportation is the quality of the people that I work with and work for and serve, and it, I really can say that I'm proud of, of the standards they hold to, of their commitment to the work that they do and commitment to their clients. I see it day in and day out, and that includes all the way down to our bus drivers and mechanics here. This has been a very, very proud relationship for us as a company, and the saddest part is, is, is losing that relationship. We can always come back to Las Vegas, we can always stay in the hotels, we can always come back, and we're going to be here bidding on other opportunities with you in the future. But losing this relationship is, is the saddest part for us. I'd like to say that in all the agencies that I have reason to deal with over these nine years, I would put the RTC and its staff at the very top, and I mean that sincerely. Your professionalism, your fairness, your openness, your discipline is really exceptional, and I want to congratulate you on it. And I know that Keolus and MB are very lucky to have you and to serve you, and we hope to have the opportunity, again, to come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the Board? Oh, Arlene?
No, I think I'll let Chris.
Okay, if you want to speak, speak after this.
Okay.
Nick, thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Barbara Powell. I'm the outgoing, um, elected Vice President of Local sixteen thirty-seven ATU. I have several things that I'd like to address to you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the positive things that have come about. Thank you for not only listening, but hearing the requests that we made, some of them of you, and acting upon them. Number one, thank you for coming out and writing on our coaches to see what it is that we experience day in, day out. Thank you for making the adjustments that you've made for, in our scheduling, and hopefully they work. I'll be back to let you know. And again, thank you for all of the positive things that have come about. I'm not going to apologize for my coworkers for not showing up, um, to do the jobs that we do. Number one, no one wants to leave their livelihood up to someone else to pick for them. I don't want you, you, or you to pick who I work for. I don't want anyone to choose what route I do. This is the reason that many people did not show up and chose to go out and choose their employer. It's been said that we generally bid by proxy. No, we don't. There were only, under certain circumstances, that we bid by proxy. Some of us, having worked in other systems, were familiar with it and know exactly how it works, but there were other people who were quite unsure and who wanted to be there so that there, if there were any mistakes, errors made, that they would be there to correct them or to see exactly what they were, so that they could be corrected. I'd like to let you know that I will be back as well, not wearing that title, but I will be back, and thankfully, I will be able to speak directly for myself and for others that feel the same way that I do. And again, thank you, and, oh, as far as the maintenance department is concerned, in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, somewhere around there, the administration of ATU at that time told us, even though we had gone through a contract, that RTC had made sure that they contacted our employers and told them that you need to make sure that you, excuse me, get the proper caliber maintenance people that we need, and do whatever it takes to ensure that they will be retained, okay? That was done at that particular time. Now, all of a sudden, here we are again, we were promised by you guys, along with the newcoming employers, that everyone, as long as you were able to pass the drug test, as long as you were able to pass the background test, that you would have your jobs. That didn't happen. That didn't happen. So now we'd like for you to step forward, step up to the plate once again, and ensure that these gentlemen have their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment period, and this meeting is adjourned.